So, yeah, for the residents.
June, what they used to charge the rent back. You know, rent it for a wedding or something.
I just don't reach.
What do you mean they're not gonna charge?
Well, we'll figure out.
It's gonna be free residents.
I don't know. The guy with the sport coat sitting out there.
You can renew your vows out there, June.
He looks at himself. So you got some lined up, ready to go?
So my, I'm in my calendar.
I was thinking about it.
I bet you they do. I think he's trying, I think.
We're waiting for that TV to come on.
My number one thing. He was taking, he was taking. I don't know. Something meets all the criteria.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
When is I? You like how the years after the holidays?
Why would you wanna keep this based on? That'd be too easy.
Can you get him to set the TV for us?
Yeah. It's on.
Hey, Don, I know how to get off the LinkedIn. Kill your computer.
Well, call our meeting to order. First item is invocation by Pastor Don Tejama. And they'll be followed by the pledge of allegiance by Brian. Please stand.
Love and heavenly Father, we just thank you so much that we take time in the order of business to acknowledge you. And Father, we thank you first and foremost for all the wonderful blessings that you have bestowed upon our community. These people that have devoted their time to serving their community. For our employees of this beautiful town. And pray for protection and your blessing of prosperity upon them as well. We thank you for the growth that you've brought. And the many opportunities that we have for employment. We also, Lord God, want to recognize our first responders. And pray not only for the respect of their position, but most importantly, for their protection as they protect the citizens of this wonderful community. God, direct our thoughts. Give your wisdom where it's needed. And help us to continue to have a spirit of unity. In your awesome name we pray. And everybody say it.
Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate that. Brian?
Ladies and gentlemen, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the states of America and to your republic which stands one nation under God in the distance from the rest of the world.
Thank you, Brian. Next item, roll call. June?
Councilmember Grossman?
I'm here.
Vice Mayor and I, here. Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Marshall?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson and Mallory are absent. And Mayor Scoog?
Present.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, next item, scheduled announcements and presentations. USA flag presentation to VFW. I wonder if I can meet these people down here. Skip, take your beautiful bride with you. Bring them all.
It's. At the end, we have the recognition. Happy birthday, President Skip Rades. He did make it there when he said he wanted for many years old. He's not anywhere near that. Come on way from that. He should have already.
So happy birthday. That was loud. You have lived an accomplished, honorable, and happy life with wonderful friends and loving family to share many memories with. It is an honor and a great pleasure to share this milestone day with you. And I wish you a happy birthday.
Thank you, sir.
What the arrangement has been years and years ago. Mayor, between 93 to 98. And at that time, we made arrangements to give the Legion and the VFW 25 flags a year. They were putting out 125. That meant that over a five-year period, they would have completely rotate all 125 flags. Well, a few weeks ago, this gentleman came up to me and they explained that, you know, we're really putting on more flags. It's over 400. I don't remember. 408, I believe. VFW, that's one side. The Legion does the other side of the highway. And they said they're running short of flags. We were able to jump it to 65 flags. And I believe that's the count in these two boxes.
If it's short, we'll get with you. I said if it comes up short, we'll catch up with you.
Believe me, they will too. Anyway, the flags are here. You wanna show the audience what they look like?
Yeah. They come all bundled up. And they're three by five American flags. And our goal someday is to have the corridor of flags to go from down around Alvarez and Tractor Supply all the way out to Glassford Hill or further. It's very unique for a town, city, whatever we are, or whatever you guys are. I'm an import. I'm from Dewey. So we appreciate all of from you, the council, the mayor, vice mayor, and all the people in this town. Like I said, we're trying to make this something very unique. Thank you, sir.
Skip, would you introduce the folks with you?
This is Big Bill. There's John and Jack. And they have Dana and Haley. And the two good-looking ladies standing out or sitting out there. That's Nay and there's Debbie. So I can't remember my own name. Remember, I'm senile and old?
Skip is not old. He's only 80.
No comments, but thank you once again.
He's a Marine, Skip.
He's a Marine.
He's a Marine, so we have to forget.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Two boxes.
Oh. If you have nothing else to do, then come over to the VFW and have a box.
We're gonna do that too.
Okay, thank you.
Good, well, thank you. Citizen of the Month. Okay, let's do the Citizen of the Month next. Who, where's Steve?
Hello. This past year, Mayor and council asked us to put together a Citizen of the Month program for our town, specifically because we have so many people in the community who are doing things for other people that don't get recognition. And we're looking for the people that are not necessarily members of organizations or those types of things. But we're looking for the people who, like I said, don't get the recognition. And so we've had some great nominations since we put this out. And we have a board made up of different community people who have helped us choose our first Citizen of the Month. And so this month, we're proud to introduce for January, Mr. Alan Bergman. That's who we have here. And Councilmember Stephen Marshall is going to read the nomination from his friend.
All right, so this is what was submitted on your behalf. It's from your friend Bill. It says, "I'm an early riser. When I first met Alan, McDonald's opened at 5:00 a.m. He and my friend Dave were often there at 4:59 along with myself. Alan is the kind of guy who says good morning to other folks, so it was easy to begin talking to him. Since the group has grown to about 10 people from 4:30 to 6:30 a.m., they sit in the same section and talk every day. Al's the kind who always asks a person, asks what a person is doing that day, so it's natural to ask it back. This is how I know that he helps a lot of people without making a big deal of it. It just comes out in natural conversation. He helped a newlywed man, or newly widowed man, sorry, clean out his house and paint his kitchen. He offered to let a homeless veteran sleep on his couch. The veteran had medical issues. He let him sleep on his couch until he was able to get a place to stay. He also helped a person with lack of money find a subsidized apartment. And he regularly takes veterans who cannot drive to the VA for medical tests. He also helps people get a little more gasoline when he could tell that they needed it. Al regularly helps people despite not having much for himself. He does not boast about it. He just does it. This is why I'd like to nominate him for Prescott Valley Citizen of the Month. And Al, thank you. I'm a veteran myself, so anybody that helps out veterans has a special place in my heart. And it's definitely my honor to be able to present you with the first Citizen of the Month award and a pen."
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe I was put on the earth to do this, and I'm blessed. Thank you very much. Thankfully, Al, there's people like you. Thank you so much. Okay, let's take the Prescott Area Leadership. Call out for men, women, and youth of the year. Greetings, how are you?
I will do that, absolutely. Hello, Mayor Scoog, councilmembers. Prescott Area Leadership is happy to tell you we are in our 25th year. My name is Beth Staub. I am president-elect. A couple of things that we want to tell you about. May I put a slideshow in? It's very brief.
So Kathy, I'm gonna show up. What's up with you, Mom? She's my helper.
Ryan?
I'm gonna go on. I'm not gonna waste any more of your time.
Thank you. It's all right. It's, I can.
I've got a slide projection.
I do. And I just, I don't know where it shows for them.
Ryan can do it.
Our man of many talents.
That he has the ability to do computers.
He has many talents.
Yes, he does. He has that talent.
He's magical. He is.
Oh, magic Ryan.
We are in our 25th year at Prescott Area Leadership and really proud to be here. And we cannot thank you guys especially for your help and support, not only with Man, Woman, and Youth of the Year Award, but everything that we do. It's also very exciting because I happen to see an alumni of Prescott Area Leadership on the board. And that would be Michael Whiting. Thank you, Michael, for participating in Prescott Area Leadership. Our program now includes, which is very exciting, we include Yavapai Community College credit. And Dave Clever, president of Prescott Area Leadership, has made that happen for our next class for best class 26. We're very excited about that. We are a fraction of the cost still of any leadership group in the state. If you see the slide here, it tells you different places that we've investigated to see where we're at. We are much lower. We are looking at an increase. Let me ask my friend Kathy.
Five this year?
We are gonna be $500 for this class next year for best class 26. That is still lower than most of these in the state. And what I'd like to highlight about that is we are one of the best in the state. Actually, I would like to go so far as to say we are. Since now we are accredited with Yavapai College, you get real credit. We also are doing things with Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. In the morning, we get an actual training, which is a little different than what we used to do. We get training in leadership skills. Where in the afternoon, we get to see things about our community not everybody gets to see. Dealing with things like healthcare, education, city government, things that we don't really see unless we are involved in a leadership group like this. We are outstanding. There was a gentleman that came back to our area from Phoenix. He took a leadership group down there. And I'd like to tell you, he said, "We blow them out of the water. They're very unorganized and they're not doing, they're not teaching servant leadership", which is what we like to do. So we're very proud of that. And we're continuing on. Yay. The next thing I'd like to tell you, obviously, we have a lot of alumni in the community that has belonged to Prescott Area Leadership. And like I said, you guys have always been incredibly supportive. And we would like to take a moment to say thank you. There are things that we want to brag about because we can. And you guys have let us do this. And the first thing is, is that we have a youth program. I don't know if you guys know this. Prescott Area Youth Leadership has been reinvented. We do something kind of like a Survivor, though we don't kick anyone off the island. But it is a competition where they actually learn some things about leadership, and then they have to put them in use. And it's a weekend here in Prescott at one of our camps. And I gotta tell you, I know you guys already. You talk about our youth wonderfully. I'm a former teacher from Bradshaw Mountain High School. And you guys have always been awesome to our kids. We have great kids in this community. And I'll tell you what, every year after year after year with Prescott Area Youth Leadership, you would be proud. You would be so incredibly proud of our kids and what they're doing. As you see at Man, Woman, and Youth. When we say, "Thank you so much" to a volunteer, you see that also in our youth program with a man, woman, and youth. We are accepting applications right now for man, woman, and youth. If you go to prescottarealeadership.org, you can think about a person that you want to highlight. Please go there. Please give them the recognition. Because as was said before me, recognition is not always top priority in our busy lives. And this is a great opportunity to get somebody that you know that has really put servant leadership to work front and center. And that's an amazing event that grows every year. And what better way than on the 25th year to say thank you to somebody very important? Please nominate a man, a woman, and a youth. It should be a high school-aged child, just so you know. That's usually what they look at. But if you've got an outstanding youth that's younger, submit them. We'd love to see them. We also want to highlight the fact that we have a community garden in Prescott, not Prescott Valley, but a community garden as a Prescott Area Leadership program along with Hungry Kids. Are you guys aware of Hungry Kids program at HUSD? That was first started through Prescott Area Leadership. So thank you for taking the time and the opportunity to help us, to be supportive of us. We really appreciate your time and all of the work that you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Just, we're gonna do the proclamation next, number six. And then we'll come back to the library report. Is that okay with you, June? You wanna read the Martin Luther King Day proclamation? Somebody here to receive that? Oh, great.
Martin Luther King Jr.'s Day of Service, January 19, 2015. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union. And whereas millions of Americans have been inspired by the life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and his teachings, continue to guide and inspire us in addressing challenges in our communities as we serve our neighbors and communities on the King Holiday. And whereas serving on the King Holiday is an appropriate way to honor Dr. King, meet local and nation needs, bring our citizens together, and strengthen our communities and nation. And whereas the King Day of Service is the only federal holiday commemorated as a national day of service, and offers an opportunity for Americans to give back to their communities on the holiday and make an ongoing commitment to service throughout the year. And whereas King Day of Service projects are being organized by a committee of nonprofits, community organizations, entities including Arizona Serve, Corporation for National and Community Service, and Prescott College. And whereas citizens of Prescott Valley have an opportunity to participate in events in Yavapai County on the King Day of Service, January 19, 2015, as well as support ongoing volunteer needs and commit to meaningful service throughout the year. Now therefore, I, Mayor Harvey C. Scoog of Prescott Valley, proclaim the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday as a day of service in Prescott Valley, and call upon citizens to pay tribute to the life and works of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and through participation in community service projects on Martin Luther King Day and throughout the year.
Thank you, June. You're willing to introduce yourself?
My name is Lloyd. I work with Arizona Serve with the visitor projects here in Yavapai County and working to end poverty. And hopefully with this proclamation, we can inspire the spirit of MLK and our citizenry and civic engagement throughout the year. Weathers. Lloyd Weathers, correct. Thank you.
We appreciate that, Lloyd. And thank you so much for that.
So much.
Thank you, Lloyd. Next, we'll go on to the library annual report. Larry?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, and town staff. It's really my pleasure to present again this year the 2014 Spotlight, which is the Prescott Valley Library's annual report. I have some hard copies here I'd like to hand out first.
We did have a complete copy of it, but it's all black and white. He says he wants us to have a better copy than that.
I'm gonna do this a little differently this time. I'm sure many of you have heard the biblical statement, "The first shall be last and the last first." If you would turn to the last page in the Spotlight. I'd like to bring your attention to the library staff. We've got one great library staff here in our library. They work hard. They're dedicated. They're really professional. And it doesn't matter whether they're out front with the patrons or in the back. They are just a fine group of people that work hard. In addition to that, they're the ones that put this Spotlight report together. And without them, all you'd have is me. And you don't want that. They are very, 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 very well done. All right. There are a few things that I would like to highlight for you. I won't take too much of your time. What, you said a half hour, Stuart? Forty-five minutes, okay. One of the new things that we have is on page four, which is the Digital Media Lab. It's the old virtual reality room that's been converted to a room where organizations or individuals can come in and put their own program together. There's been a training program on how to do it. The equipment is there for that. Children's Department. Circulation is doing very well. And children's computers have increased too. And there's a new program called Ernie, Early Literacy Stations. Sixty of the best educational software titles covering seven curriculum areas are being used now. I'm sorry, I should tell you what page I'm on, shouldn't I? Page seven, I'd like to go to now. We're doing more with Facebook. And we're getting liked better on Facebook. We're keeping pace with the continuous-changing technology. and our collections actually reflect our community. Page 12, the first item there is Reference. We, our Reference is very, very well covered and people come in and ask, "Where is this? Where is that?" And Reference in nonfiction is really rewarding. The last sentence there, "The most notable request of the year was adultery for dummies." Do you believe that? Would you believe I have a copy of Adultery for Dummies? And Stuart is hiding it. He doesn't want anybody to see it. No, this is really a, this is a joke. Because it says Tiger Woods, Adultery for Dummies. Okay. On the back on page 13, 14, page 14 are the volunteers. It's a whole page there about volunteers. Volunteers are just the support system that our library uses and needs to support the staff and I've highlighted a statement down here, "Volunteers recorded over 10,661 hours of service for physical year 2013, 2014, representing 5.2 full-time employees." And if you translate that in what you'd be asking the staff to do, you'd have them working 24 hours a day, 24/7. So, the volunteers are very, very important to support, as is your support and we thank you for that support because without it, we'd have a problem. So, again, thank you very much. The last section, I'd like you, I would request that you go back to page 13. I'm sure some of you have seen the advertisements on TV where they say, "This is worth so much and that's worth so much and this is worth so much." And then they say, "So-and-so is priceless." And we feel that the Friends of the Library is a priceless organization that supports us financially, it supports us with programs and activities, it contributes to, to the acquisition of literary station and it supports the professional development of staff such as the Library Development Program in Costa Rica with teen librarian Yolanda Feliciano. I thank you very much for allowing me to present this. I'd like to now turn this over to Stuart who has an introduction he'd like to make.
Thank you, Larry. Appreciate that.
Do you have any questions about the Spotlight while he's here? Oh, I'm sorry. He says, he's the president. I can't argue.
I notice he doesn't, he's got two vacancies on the board. Is that?
Two vacancy on the board.
Yes. In the process of finding candidates?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I forgot the board. On the very first page, the board members are presented. Yes, we have two vacancies. We've been struggling to fill them, trying all different sources to try to find a couple people. We've put out viewers, advertisements, et cetera. We have had a couple people, but they, they turned us down and they went elsewhere. But, we're still looking and we're trying very hard. As, as I said to Stuart, I'd hate my legacy to be that we went within a short council, a board of trustees, but he turns it around and said, "Oh, look what you've been able to do with fewer members."
Well, people have been helping and filling those vacancies, so I expect this will be filled too pretty quick.
I hope so. Yeah. Thank you.
Stuart, you're up.
Just a few moments. I, I felt that the trustees, you appoint them, so you pretty much know who they are, but this organization, the Friends Board, you've never met and I'm going to try to do this. They re-elect every year in November to start theirs as a calendar year. So, I'm going to ask the board members that are here to come up and so I can quickly introduce you to them because they are very valuable. We have some, as you know, Carol Colasi is coming. She serves on the trustees and on the Friends Board. And so, as they come up, Diane Milikovich is on the Friends Board. We have Gray Nagel. She's going to be the treasurer for, which is a valuable position. Nancy Thurston, who I hoodwinked to be secretary. And then we, as I said, we have Carol, who's vice president, and then we have Juan Feliciano, Yolanda's husband, to be the president. And so, I think he may want to say a few words, but one thing I wanted to share, when Larry mentioned that early literacy station, we wouldn't have been able to, it's, we had one, but it was out of warranty and we needed to try to replace it. They paid for it and I think it was like $3,000. And I know after all these years, I mean, they worked hard for their $3,000 and I was very proud of them and they did it because the kids do use that. So, Juan, do you have a few seconds you want to, or do you want me to hand those out?
Yes. I really appreciate the presence of the, of the council here and I just simply want to say briefly that the Friends of the Library in terms of vision, that we would like to encompass our efforts to dovetail with the needs of the community in terms of allowing as much as we can to give to the community the resources that are required to facilitate programs or events that will enhance community involvement. And that's basically what we, what I want to say. Thank you.
Good. Any other comments?
Any questions about the board and in, so, I just want to thank you personally, but I wanted the council to meet them and so they could see who they are because they worked hard.
Okay. Steve, you want to make a comment?
Yes, I just had a, a couple of things I wanted to mention. First was a little background on the Citizen of the Month thing. I just wanted everybody to know what all went into it. First, I talked to Larry and he thought the idea was good, so he got the ball rolling and got me set up with Heidi. And then the town was able to, or the rest of the council approved it, but Heidi, Dom's Foster, did 99% of the work and it wouldn't have been possible without her and she's gone now, but I wanted to say thank you to her for that. And then the next thing I wanted to mention is April 18th, it's a Saturday, we're going to be, the town, together with Hope Serves, is going to be doing a thing called Prescott Valley Stand Up for Veterans. It's going to be a big event to help veterans get employed. We're going to have every veteran service organization possible there and right now, we're, we're looking for volunteers and, and stuff to get that going. It's going to be at the Prescott Valley Event Center and that was it.
Okay, that was the first one in comments and communications and we, I thought that was for the library also, so I apologize. We jumped a gun a little bit. Laura, you have another comment?
I do. I just want to call everyone's attention today that tomorrow is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day and each year, 780,000 officers across our country go to work knowing that they face extreme danger. Each year, an average of 105 to 203 officers die in the line of duty with 50,000 assaulted and 14,000 injured. More than 300 of our sworn officers commit suicide. Last year, Arizona lost six officers. From my point of view, there's no other profession in the world that has this degree of losses, but I don't want to dwell on the losses. I want to dwell on the service, on the dedication, and I want to commend each officer in our community that goes above and beyond every day when they put their uniform on. And I want to ask you tomorrow to send emails and call the department and let them know that you appreciate that they're for us and that we're there. We're not standing behind them, we're standing beside them. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Any other comments? If I may make, just, just add to it. Our, Prescott Valley was just commented, complimented in a study that was presented about two months ago. Crime, safest towns in cities in the state. There was, they took all the cities and towns of 10,000 or more. There's 42 of them. Prescott Valley ranked 12th in the top as being in the safest, safest in the town. More recently, we received another study that they'd taken, it was noting, noting that there were 20 cities and towns in Arizona that have had declining crime rates from 2007 to 2012. And I think with that, we, we, we do owe our police department a thank you. We also owe our fire services and our military, all those uniformed people. When that call comes in, they never know what they're going to be facing. They do an outstanding job and we, we're seeing a very good trend here in Prescott Valley. So, when you do get a chance, thank officers, thank the fire, thanks the police, thank the military. Thank you so much. Any other comments?
Chief, you want to, Larry, you might want to share that with the, with the audience? And Scott, good to see you. Want to make any comments, Scott?
I'm fighting a respiratory and I can't. I didn't hear what you said.
We hope that you would share our comments with your men and women in uniform.
I certainly will. They, they love your support. Thank you.
Hey, thanks for your great job and thank him for the great job. Okay, with that, we'll move on to consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless discussion is desired on a specific item, that item will be removed for, from the consent agenda to be considered separately. We have the approval of the December 11th work study and the December 18th council meeting minutes, approving the November 21st, 2014 Board and Commission Selection Committee meetings or minutes, approving a temporary extension of premises patio license for existing liquor license, number 6130055 for Barefoot Bob's Billiards located at 8367 East Pecos Drive. Cherry, Cheryl Soto, applicant of Cheryl here. And then approving the donation of the retired PV, PD fleet vehicle number 1121 with odometer reading of 107,630 miles to YRMC Security Department. NE is approving the accounts payable for December 8th through December 9th. Anyone want to pull an item or do you want to approve it as a whole?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve all items listed on the consent agenda by electronic vote.
I'll second. Okay, with a motion and a second. June, would you set the vote? And that passes. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on then to number nine, new business for review, comment and/or action. Consideration of approving resolution number 1900, approving and adopting a final development plan plan for Pronghorn Ranch, Unit 9, tract 44 Rimrock. Richard?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I wanted to marvel that I think I heard Stuart say that he's getting rid of the books as part of the Spotlight. They're so successful with electronic media. Did I not hear that?
Yeah.
Maybe it's wishful thinking. I don't know. Just think what we could do with all that space. With that in mind, Mr. Mayor, Council, you're looking at a final development plan for a tract of land in Pronghorn Ranch. It's proposed to be developed and known as Rimrock Garden Homes. The final development plan illustrates 33 single-family lots. However, these, all, with the exception of three, are configured as a duplex. They share a common lot line. You're very familiar with that. Granville has a similar product that's been very successful, known as the Arbers. The preliminary development plan was approved, was consistent with the, the underlying zoning approved by the planning commission in April of 2014 and now it comes to you for approval as a final development plan. We hope that they're very successful with this product because the previous slide shows and the written description identifies that if they are successful, they intend to move onto a commercially zoned, presently commercially zoned property to the west and move into a subsequent phase. With these additional units, it does not exceed the water allocation as part of the assured water supply for the project. I do believe there's a representative from Mandalay Homes in the audience. However, I would assist Mayor in responding any questions that you or the council may have and staff recommends approval of the final development plan.
Hey, would you introduce the gentleman? There he is.
Yeah, come on.
You'll have to introduce yourself.
Yes, my name's David Eversen with Mandalay Homes.
You got 20 minutes.
20 minutes? Oh, I wasn't here to make a presentation. You said to introduce myself, so that's why I started and ended. I apologize.
Easy on him, huh?
Well, we've been building in Pronghorn for a while. As, as you may or may not know, I've been building in Prescott Valley here since 2009.
A beautiful community. By the way, I think you, you might reintroduce your name. I don't think June caught it the first time.
Oh, it's David Eversen. I'm the president of Mandalay Homes.
Thank you. Appreciate. She, she needs it for the record.
Okay. And then I kind of stepping in, Steve Shea presented this project to you some months back and his wife had to go into hospital and she's out now. Everything's good, but he wanted to stay home with her, so he asked me to step in on his stead. But I'm not as familiar with what's been discussed, but I'm really familiar with the project and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions, anyone? Laura?
Well, I was very intrigued with the information we were provided, the elevations. Could you tell us a little bit about the construction materials for these facilities and the color schemes? Every woman wants to know that.
Okay. Well, the construction, you know, we started with our assembly and, and the assembly of our homes, so we put a lot of effort into to make them energy efficient. They, you know, won several awards nationally for it.
Yes, my name's David Everson with Mandelay Homes.
You got 20 minutes.
20 minutes? Oh, I wasn't here to make a presentation. You said to introduce myself, so that's why it started and ended, I apologize.
Easy on him, huh?
Well, we've been building in Pronghorn for a while, as you may or may not know. Been building in Prescott Valley here since 2009.
A beautiful community. By the way, I think you might reintroduce your name, I don't think you even got it the first time.
Oh, it's David Everson. I'm the president of Mandelay Homes.
Thank you, appreciate it. She needs it for the record.
Okay. Right. Thank you. And then I kind of stepping in, Steve Shea presented this project to you some months back, and his wife had to go into hospital, and she's out now, everything's good, but he wanted to stay home with her, so he asked me to step in on his stead. But I'm not as familiar with what's been discussed, but I'm really familiar with the project, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions, anyone? Laura?
Well, I was very intrigued with the information we were provided, the elevations. Could you tell us a little bit about the construction materials for these facilities and the color schemes? Every woman wants to know that.
Okay. Well, the construction, you know, we start with our assembly and the assembly of our homes, so we put a lot of effort into to make them energy efficient, you know, won several awards nationally for it, also in their air quality. Beyond that, it's kind of a unique design. It was established as a product that would minimize garage doors to the street and also reduces the driveways by a third. It makes a nicer streetscape. The finishes themselves will be very, very similar to the product that we're selling right now in Unit 14 at Pronghorn Ranch. So we'd have the, it'll be granite and the color schemes, granite countertops, you know, the raised stagger cabinets and the like. All of that, those finishes and stuff are going to be on our website here in the next week or two.
Okay. Well, it presents well, very well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Are these Energy Star rated homes?
Absolutely. In fact, they exceed that by a substantial level. Energy Star is in the mid 70s in a hers rating score. All of these will perform at 50 or below on a hers rating. And they will be what they call Department of Energy Z home, Z hers rated. So what happens is they'll all be registered with the Department of Energy and certified third-party, each individual home to meet certain standards, including pre-wire for solar and water conservation, as well as a pre-wire for electric car.
Good, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much. Good to meet you, and I appreciate you coming in.
Thank you so much.
Okay, any questions, comments, or motions?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Steve already did.
I don't know how I did that. You want me to do it, or you?
Go ahead, your name's on there, Stephen.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 1900, adopting and approving a final development plan plat FDP 14-011 for Pronghorn Ranch, Unit 9, Tract 44, Rimrock by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote? And that passes. Richard, thank you. Okay, we move on then to number 9B. Consideration of approving resolution number 1901, adopting and approving a final development plan plat FDP 14012 for Stoneridge, Unit 4, Tract U.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're looking at a final development plan for a tract that was previously designated for commercial purposes. It's at the corner of Cloud Cliff and the Old Black Canyon Highway in Stoneridge. You might recall, the planning commission reviewed, recommended approval of a general plan amendment, together with a zoning map change. You approved that January of last year. And now before you is the final development plan or plat for the proposed single-family residential use comprising three residential lots along the same streetscape that serves the adjoining residential properties. I can't say that people were ecstatic, but of course, we received no opposition to this action. With that, I'd conclude and respond to any questions you may have.
Questions, anyone?
Mike Richards is in the audience, and I'm sure he'd love to come up and talk to you.
He'd love to. Hey, give him a, come on up and talk to us. 20 minutes, by the way.
Now, just follow the tracks.
I could probably use 30, but 20 will do. Thank you, Richard. This is pretty, whoops, excuse me, pretty straightforward and simple. It's three lots. It was originally designated as a commercial parcel, and we just don't feel that it fits appropriately for the, for that area. So we're going to use existing product that we've been building in Phase 7 and finish out these three lots.
Good.
Like it would be a better use for that particular location.
Did you get his name, June? Good.
Mike Richards.
Go ahead, appreciate that. Okay, any questions, anyone? Laura?
No, we've really gone over this well. It's the right direction.
Yeah, I think it's, it's good.
Question, Mike?
No, just a comment. I think I remember when this went through and all the comments I received through the residents of Stoneridge were very supportive, and I think it'll fit very nicely opposed to what was originally destined for that corner, so I think we're all looking forward to that.
Good.
Steve, you got a comment? No? Any other questions, comments, motions, promotions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Great, okay.
Motion to approve resolution 1901, adopting and approving a final development plan plat FDP 14-012 for Stoneridge, Unit 4, Tract U.
I'll second.
A motion in a second?
Oops.
Okay, a motion in a second, would you set the vote? Another big test comes, where it passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming out.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, we've gone to the number C, consideration of approving change order number 2 on a construction with Dansson Construction LLC and the amount of $23,911 for alterations to the new and existing footings due to discovered additions for the civic stage expansion and roof installation project. And as to associated budget transfers to close out the project, as detailed. Kim?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. This is for a request of a change order for modifications required to the concrete footings. The discovered underground conditions were that the existing stage footings were a foot wider and a foot deeper than anticipated, so we had to cut further into the existing concrete through rebar and tie that together better. We changed from a pier footing to a spread footing, and those changes were required for the improvements to the stage. The reason the footings on the stage are so substantial is because of wind lift and snow load, and for that kind of a structure, that size of footing is required. So this includes the concrete rebar changes as well as earthwork changes required for the changes to the footings. Also included in this request is a budget transfer request from contingency because this did use all of the remaining available civic development impact fee funds that were accumulated and went over that amount. So that's part of the request.
Okay. Any questions, anyone? Kim, in the overall scheme of things, it's a change order, but it's not really drastically big.
Thank you. Yeah, it was a discovered condition. We don't always get so excited about those, but they handled it well, and the stage has turned out very nicely.
Good. Questions, comments, motions?
I'll make a motion.
Laura?
Motion to approve change order number 2 to the construction contract with Dansson Construction LLC and the amount of $23,911 for alterations to new and existing footings due to discovered conditions for the civic stage expansion and roof installation project, FDP F3222, as the associated budget transfers to close on the project as detailed in the analysis by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Get the motion in a second, would you set the vote, June? And that passes. Kim, good job, appreciate that. Okay, we've gone to consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council needing that request permission in advance, any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole, not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. Anyone care to make any comments? Yes, please, come on up. Good to see you, appreciate you coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy New Year to all of you.
Oh, thank you.
Happy New Year to you.
My name is Tony Ruby, I live on Stetson Drive, and I drive this area quite often. And I've been reading in the paper, and I've been busy up until this Thursday night, I'm not even dressed for the occasion, I'm sorry, but the, as far as putting the roundabout...
Could you talk a little closer to the microphone?
As far as putting the roundabout right here at this corner that I've been hearing about and reading about in the paper, you know, they, the simple thing that comes in the paper is it works well in Europe. Well, this is America. I say yes on widening the road, but in America, a four-way stop sign works just as well if we need it, put in a traffic light, the roundabouts. As if anybody done any study at all, the emergency vehicles, fire trucks do not work well through going through the roundabouts. And, you know, this is America, we're not Europe. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Tony, I appreciate that. Anyone else have any comments? If there is no further comments, then we'll move on to number 11. Need a motion to convene into executive session in order to conduct the annual review and evaluation of the performance of the town manager, Larry Tarkowski. The executive session is scheduled pursuant to Arizona Revised Statute Number 38-43103A1, which allows for discussion or consideration of employment, assignment, or appointment of public officer, appointee, or employee. Anyone care to make a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to convene into executive session by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote, June? And that passes. Thank you so much for all your coming in. Tony, I appreciate you coming by.